Evening, everyone. And welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. The date is Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019. And I'd appreciate if you turn off your cellphones as this meeting is being recorded. Ellen, can you please do our roll call? Thank you, Mrs. Granato. Good evening, everyone, and happy spring. Mr. Cassio?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Mr. Healy? Ms. McCurdy?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mrs. Paradise?
Present.
Vice Chairperson, Mr. Hill?
Here.
Chairperson, Mrs. Granato?
Here.
And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Ms. Eden Fritz-Aguire?
Here.
All present. Okay, thank you. The Board invites a group from the Hanmer School to come on up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up here, right up here. Okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. You did a great job. I hear you coming up pretty soon, too. Okay. Mr. Emmett, we have student and staff recognition tonight?
We have two this evening. If I could please have Ms. Apollos and our friends from Hanmer Elementary School, please come up to the podium for a presentation.
Can I done this?
Yes.
Good evening. We are here today to tell you a little patch of green or red outside our classroom door. We call this our outside classroom or garden. Our teacher wanted us to feel strongly about the topic. We are learning how to write convincing opinion letters.
So she said we had to prove to you that we are learning in our outdoor classroom or we may not be able to continue going, to continue to go out there. Well, it worked. We did express some strong emotions. We would like to share some of our opinions with you. I love seeing all the, all the plants bloom and turn into beautiful flowers. We work so hard and I have been learning a lot. I love the birdhouses we built. Some of my friends wrote, "We are helping the birds by giving them food and cotton for their nests." It will bring back memories when we in sixth grade, fifth grade, fourth grade.
Our outdoor garden, our outdoor garden is pretty. We put painted rocks there so the plants would not get any harm. If the rocks were not there, the flowers would get run over by the lawn mower. This did happen. We love the flowers because they just bloomed. And the, when we go outside, we can see them and what is new out there. Some of my friends wrote, "We care a lot about nature. We can do research in our garden." Like, we can see birds come or if a chipmunk or a squirrel bloom.
Our outside classroom is special because we work so hard when we are out there and we say our things to learn. Did you know? We go to our outside classroom before winter and spring. Did you know? We make decorations standing in the garden. Did you know? Some of us are worried that the tree in our garden is going to bloom. Did you know it takes millions of years to perform a rock?
Dear Board of Education members, my opinion is we learn a lot from working in our garden. Let me tell you why. One reason is we learn a lot from our, our garden is we learn how, how the plant cycle work. How it works is first you plant a seed, then you wait and water it, then it grows. It grows and there it is. Last thing, the plant takes and grow back the next year. Another reason is we learned that we, that it of, we need help if, when, with some things and you know an expert on it, it asks them to help. Like we did when we asked Mr. Strong to help us drill holes in our decorations. Also, we learned how to work with the community, like when we painted rocks for the outside garden. So when people mowed the grass, they know not to mow the flowers down. As you can see, my opinion is we learn a lot from working in the garden. Sincerely, Mary.
Dear Board of Education members, do you like gardens? Then you should come and see us work on our garden. My opinion is you should come see our garden because it is so pretty. You'll get your socks knocked off if you come here. For example, for example, imagine you saw a super neat garden. I was really new, too. We made it in the best way. We've seen so many amazing things out there such as a mole. Our garden is amazing. Another reason we work together to bloat the weeds. We also make observations together, too. We put a lot of effort into our garden. We learn so much such as the water cycle. Also, we care so much about our garden and birds. Now we put some cotton balls in a cage so birds can get them so they can make their nests. There's a lot of natural resources out there such as flowers, rocks, sand, soil, air, water, and the sun. Sincerely, Christian. P.S., come check it out, out our garden.
Dear Board of, dear Board of Education members, do you love learning? Then you must come and see us learning in our outdoor classroom. My opinion is we learn the outdoor classroom a lot. Let me tell you why we learn the outdoor classroom a lot. One reason we are learning in our outdoor garden is because we learn the water cycle. For example, we see snow and rain and we feel snow and rain. We learned expert words like evaporation, condensation, and precipitation. Another reason we learn the outdoor garden is because we, we learned the, we learned the rock cycle. For example, we touched three of rocks and saw layers of, on the rocks. Also, we observed the rocks. We also learned to take names like igneous, metamorphic, and sedimentary. Also, we learn in the outdoor classroom because we learn about the plant cycle. For example, we are learning now that plants have sprouts, down seeds, leaves, and roots. Also, we learned how plants take water from the soil. We also learned water gets clean underground by the soil. As you can see, we learn that in our outdoor classroom. Don't forget to come see our outdoor classroom.
Oh, great. Boys and girls, you are excellent in your writing and your reading.
I wonder, was the water washing? Why did the water slow? What towards the school? Is there black stuff, rocks, or smoke?
What is that?
Rock!
Rock!
There we go. There's one. Are there any others in there? There's another one?
Oh, wait, wait, wait a second. It's starting to hum. Igneous.
It's definitely smooth.
Yeah, it's super smooth. I thought it was gonna drop.
But each side though. And the chocolate looks like a mountain.
Oh, it's a big.
It's kind of in the middle. I mean, cause like, it's kind of...
The outdoor classroom, this is rock in the middle. That means we think of the rock cycle we are...
I love our outdoor classroom because there's a lot of color. And I learned there's such thing as onion grass.
I love our outdoor classroom because I love all the plant and the flowers. And I learned how to plant things.
Boys and girls and teachers, that, and Pauline, that was excellent. That was just excellent. Now, this is part of the Discovery Science Curriculum, too, I'm assuming?
I am, I'm a member of the, um, science research materials and I know we plan it really well with the outdoor classroom.
Okay. That's just excellent. I enjoyed following that. Anybody else have any comments?
You gonna grow anything else? Plenty of time for flowers.
Yeah. We like farm-to-table marks. Thank you very much. That was excellent.
Great job.
Well done. Thank you.
They'll have to say that and show it at their graduation.
Now, at this point in time, if I could please have Dr. Everett Lyons from the Connecticut Association of Schools, along with our tech ed teacher, Ms. Sue Coco, please come to the podium for a presentation.
Boys and girls, it's gonna be a hard act to follow, that's for sure. I'm not sure I can do this, but I'm gonna try at any rate. First of all, I want to thank the Board of Education members and Superintendent Emmett for the opportunity tonight to have the association recognize one of your outstanding teachers at Weathersfield High School. As you've just seen, we are blessed with many inspiring, dedicated, and creative teachers. And the association about fifteen years ago felt that our usual mission is to work with principals and building leaders. But we wanted to give our building leaders the opportunity to recognize inspiring, creative, and passionate teachers who were on their faculties. And so about fifteen years ago, we established the Exemplary Educator Award. And it is given out each year, two awards, one at each level, elementary, middle, and high school. And this year, we were blessed to have a nomination of Sue Coco, who's an amazing educator. I have to say that I'm a recovering high school principal of twenty-five years. So, I can tell you, she, she is an amazing, amazing teacher. But the process is, is a daunting one. You have to go through three hoops to get to, to where Sue is now. The first is your colleagues and your peers, your supervisors. I have to put together a packet of nominations. And we looked at the letters. Tom Moore, her principal, sent one, as did Mike Motisi, who was the actual nominator for Sue. And many of her peers also felt that they wanted to comment on her outstanding abilities as a classroom teacher. The second part was to ask Sue herself to do a reflective essay. What, what in her mind made her stand apart? Not, not that we wanted her to feed her ego. She's very humble. But what, what made her special? And it was interesting that her opening line is, is, "I'm an ADHD teacher. I am all around the place. I have energy, galore. I, I have to be constantly in motion." And later on in the essay, she talked about a Coco sighting, where she would pop up where students never thought she would be because she just needed to be constantly in motion. That intrigued us. That really intrigued us among the nominees this year. So we invited Susan for the third hurdle to come and sit with us. That was probably a mistake on our part because we left exhausted. This, this young lady has outstanding energy, outstanding passion, outstanding commitment. I need to tell you, again, as a high school principal, I was blessed on having one of the very first exemplary educators on my faculty. And I thought, indeed, I had, I had reached the gold standard. But I've got to tell you, Susan, you, you, you beat her. You've raised the bar a little bit higher on the high school level. She's involved in a variety of activities at the high school, which, again, her colleagues talk to us about, as did, as did Sue. The, um, the Blue Eagles newscast, the robotics team, the theater department, the, the blood drives, all of that, in addition to a lot of community activities that folks talk to us about. That's sort of the ADHD passion, I guess, and, and energy level. But her comment was, "I'm very lucky. I love my job." And indeed, ladies and gentlemen, it shows, as it does with every good, inspiring, creative, dedicated teacher. It shows. And indeed, we were, we were, we left the room. We finally could breathe. You know, Susan took our breath away. We just sat there and said, "Wow, wow. This is, this is the high school recipient." So it's my pleasure, on behalf of the Connecticut Association of Schools, to recognize Sue Coco as the 2019, 2020, since we're sort of late in the school year, Exemplary Educator of the Year for the high school level. Congratulations, Sue.
Well, if you've ever had a chance to work with Sue, you're absolutely right that she has more energy. And, um, the classes she teaches, she is the facilitator. These kids are working very diligently and she popped up. John and I had the opportunity to be recorded. And, and you're just a delight to work with. Thank you, Sue. Congratulations. That was great. We'll wait for everybody to come back. That was great. We'll wait one more minute for Kelly. Okay, we'll continue on. And like we said earlier, it's a hard act to follow here tonight. But next on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes for our regular Board of Ed meeting on March 26th, 2019. Are there any corrections? Anybody see any? Okay, may I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So.
All right. A second?
Seven.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions?
Same.
Same. Okay, those minutes are approved. Now, is there anyone wishing to make a public comment? Come on up to the podium, state your name and address. And may I remind you that we do have a five-minute limit. Okay. So we'll move on. Mr. Emmett, communications tonight?
Thank you, Mrs. Granato. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, before you, you have an action for the nonrenewal of non-tenure teaching staff. This action notices staff of the nonrenewal prior to the May 1st. Deadline is outlined by Connecticut statute. These nonrenewals are based on the budget uncertainty and are not the result of performance. The expectation, as it is every year, is that we receive funding that maintains these positions. Once the budget process is completed and confirmed, that any reductions would not impact staffing programs. I will ask that you take action on rescinding the nonrenewals. This is typically done at the second board meeting in May following the budget adoption, which happens no later than May 15th. Some good news, just want to put the message out there. We got our SAT results. Our SAT scores at the high school level are up across the board. So congratulations to Mr. Moore, our Weathersfield High School students and staff for the diligent work. We just got access to the scores as of yesterday morning. So we're in the process of analyzing now. And we'll have more information for you in the near future. I want to also make sure I let everyone know that the 61st Annual Art Show kicks off at the Kinni Center tomorrow with the opening reception at 6 o'clock. Our students' artwork will remain on display through May 21st at the Kinni Center. Be sure to bring your phone and your earbuds so that you can scan the QR code next to the artwork so you can learn about the development of that artwork from the student themselves. So, interesting use of technology. I want to talk a little bit about the additional fifteen minutes and your packets last week. You received a memo regarding the breakdown of the additional fifteen minutes that will be integrated into the schedule beginning in the 1920 school year, thanks to the many teachers and administrators that served on the committees that provided feedback and insight. One idea the committee's brought forward was the inclusion of four early release dates next year to allow for staff development. With the additional instructional minutes built in, the early dismissals will not have a significant impact on instructional time. And furthermore, this schedule allows for teachers to receive professional development without having to leave the classroom. This aligns with the Board's expectation of teachers remaining in the classroom with students, along with the need to provide professional development opportunities for staff members. Another factor to consider for next year is the change to the delayed opening schedule. Starting next year, we're going to go to a standard delayed opening of two hours instead of ninety minutes. Sorry, Eden, you're gonna be graduating. You'll miss that, but... We're gonna be consistent with other districts in the area. And then this provides town staff with an extra half an hour to get sidewalks cleared and buildings ready to bring in students and staff. Obviously, the next phase of this is the communication to parents, students, community providers, and transportation companies. I can say that we've ordered refrigerator magnets. So every Weathersfield family will be getting a refrigerator magnet with the new schedule starting next year. So again, thanks very much to everybody that had a major impact on moving this forward. We're very pleased with this. I'd also like to say heartfelt thank you to Attorney Morris, as well as Attorney Forrest and Attorney Joe Busher. Last Tuesday at the high school, we hosted the appellate court for the state of Connecticut. And it was an unbelievable experience that our kids had the opportunity to observe. And Mr. Morris, Mr. Forrest, and Mr. Busher stayed on with the attorneys presenting the cases and had a question and answer session with the students. And it was nothing short of amazing. So, as a superintendent of schools where you're balancing about 1,150 students running a normal day, inviting the public in, having attorneys, having marshals everywhere, we pulled it off quite nicely. And amazingly, while we ran the appellate court and had two sessions over the course of two hours, we ran through probably close to about a thousand students and through the cafeteria. And again, Mr. Moore, thank you to yourself, our security staff, your fellow administrators at the high school for making that work. So, very, very well done.
Great. Thank you. Any comments or questions for Mr. Emmett? Elaine?
I want to thank Mr. Morris and Mr. Forrest, too. You did an excellent job explaining to the children. I mean, I learned a lot just sitting in the audience, but the, the level of explanation was so appropriate for the kids. I, I can't thank you enough for taking the time to do that. That's not an easy chore, so I appreciate that, Mr. Forrest.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So we'll get on to our action items. We have action items this evening. John, would you read Motion 6A? I think we need to get a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to amend on Motion 6A, Approval of Nonrenewal Notices of Teaching Staff and Remove Employee Number 906179.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this, Michael?
Yes, Madam Chair. With this particular position, this individual had tenure in a previous district and as such was on the fast track. So this individual has already achieved tenure in the district and did not have to wait the requisite number of years. So this one needs to come off the, the council.
Thank you for the explanation.
No problem.
So, take a vote on this? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the amendment passes. So, John, can you then read Motion 6A for us?
Sure, the downer of the evening. Moved at the contract of employment of ID numbers 906445, 906104, 906443, 906094, 906451, 906352, 906093, 906335, 906364, 905564, 906126, 906419, 906185, 906357, 906421, 905908, 906448, 905832, 906496, 906470, 906183, 906196, 906427, 905444, 906084, 906166, 906180, 906171, 906016, 906086, 906188, 903157, 906186, 904688, 906362, 906481. 906352, 906093, 906335, 906364, 905564, 906126, 906419, 906185, 906357, 906421, 905908, 906448, 905832, 906496, 906470, 906183, 906196, 906427, 905444, 906084, 906166, 906180, 906171, 906016, 906086, 906188, 903157, 906186, 904688, 906362, 906481, 906453, 906433, 906406, 906156, 906100, 906452, 906366, 906361, 906360, 906359, that one's good, 906446, 906083, 906420, 905969, 906182, non-tenure teachers not be renewed for the following school year upon expiration at the end of the 2018-19 school year and that the superintendent of schools is directed to advise such persons in writing of this action.
Second. Okay, any discussion on this? I think Michael did discuss it ahead of time. John?
Just curiosity, are the majority of these teachers in the elementary level or are they spread across the district?
They're predominantly at the elementary level, Mr. Cassio.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll take a vote on it. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Great, Motion 6A passes. And let's move on to 6B. Elaine?
Move that the 2019-2020, for the 2019-2020 physical year, the Weatherfield Board of Education continue to certify with the Connecticut State Department of Education that food sold to students separately from the reimbursable school meals will meet Connecticut nutritional standards and furthermore, that the Board of Education will continue to allow exemptions for the sale of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutritional standards, provided 1) the sale is in connection with an event occurring af- after the end of the regular school day or on a weekend, 2) the sale is at the location of the event, and 3) the food is not sold from a vending machine or school store. And I should note that this is an annual requirement by the Connecticut State Department of Education.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? We read it all, it's pretty self-explanatory. Okay, we take a vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion 6B passes, thank you. And let's go on to Motion 6C. Chris?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As curriculum might have moved that the Weatherfield Board of Ed approval adoption of the ECE Digital Foundation curriculum.
Second. Okay, second?
I found it, Madam Chair. You have the memo from Staley concerning this is a, this is replacing existing course. It's worth three credits at UConn and it's a introductory studio experience type course. There's a lot of collaboration that goes on in it on digital art concepts, media, and strategies for making creative digital work. Looks like an interesting course, I could have taken that, but we were still using rotary phones back then. Actually, we had videotape, black and white videotape, that's dating me. We had a great presentation at our curriculum meeting the other night and looks like a very well-thought-out course and obviously one that will bridge into the college experience for many kids, so I hope people support it.
Okay. Do we do a second on that? Second, okay. Any other discussion? Well, I was, Joanne Campbell is the teacher there and she did mention that UConn has said to her that the students need to collaborate even more in solving problems together. I thought that was a very interesting piece from her. The course looks outstanding and the ECE, for those out there, is Early College Experience. So wonderful and if you read the description, it's just an outstanding course. Anyone else? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Good, Motion 6C passes. And Kelly, would you read Motion 6D for us?
Move that the Weatherfield Board of Education approve the superintendent to again submit a grant under the RFP to continue the Family Learning Program to Generational Learning for the 2019-2020 school year.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, I'll just read it right off here, that this, the Family Literacy Activities are services that make sustainable improvements in the economic prospects for families and better enable parents or family members to support their children's learning needs. And this is from parents and children from ages six weeks to five years old. If you've ever had the opportunity to go there, it really is a very exciting learning environment to be part of. Anyone else for discussion on it? All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion 6D passes. Okay, tonight, we have the first read on the proposed update to policy 5870, which is student right of private technology devices. This is the first read as we were talking about. Anybody have any comments or questions?
I did. Can I correctly understand this, that if we pass this policy, we're asking kids to give up their Fourth Amendment rights so that we can search their phones or their digital equipment? Yes. I don't think we can do that.
Well, we're down to concern and I will happily consult with our attorney on that, absolutely.
Thank you.
If it's a Fourth Amendment violation, I don't think we can actually do that.
You're saying we can't take it away from them?
I don't think we can search anybody's phone without a search warrant that's properly issued.
I think we can correct that. I don't think the issue behind, I was, finally, the issue here isn't to, it is not into, as you say, do a search in the sense of searching content, it is the use of the device during the school day in the ordinary position. So whatever's going on, it's secondary material to the disruption of the, of the device being used. So the issue of what's on it or what they're doing is immaterial, is the issue of the usage of it, but we'll be happy to...
It's only fine with the way it's written.
But my point is, well, talking, John, I'm not trying to dismiss that, I'm just trying to emphasize what the whole point of this obviously was when you hear the cyber police and services. They're completely right to be on top of that. Thank you for pointing that out to make that clear.
Yeah, I'll definitely, you know, get a ruling and remember, these are shipment and good one policies, so these have been vetted. So what we want to make sure we do, any changes that we've made to these, we want to make sure we vet those through shipment and good ones, so we'll definitely follow up on that.
There may be pending legislation too about that. There was last, Kevin, wasn't there last year pending legislation about that with schools and kids?
It didn't.
It was pending, but it didn't go anywhere. There's a lot of pending out there, it's a problem.
It's fought forward again this year, too.
I don't think it's, I think it's fell by the wayside.
Yeah, we would have, we actually, we can check that, but I haven't, between the two of us, I think we would have spotted that, but we'll look.
Okay. I was looking at, but are limited to and privately owned technological devices. I have to say, we were watching the high schoolers come in, they all have earbuds, so that would be included in that when it says not limited to. The only other thing I wrote down here is in the paragraph after use of privately owned technological devices, it says privately owned technological devices may not be used during instructional time. I want it, they are turned off and out of sight because today, technology is getting so great that you can, you know, work with your phone even when it's not on you, so, and the advances just continue. So actually, just talking about putting in those words, turned off and out of sight, might also be a piece to this.
Bobby, where is that in particular to this policy? What page are you on?
I was on the first one right there.
First page? Okay, first paragraph.
I'm sure when we restart the Fourth Amendment, we can do that, too.
Can't search. Okay. So we'll have another policy meeting before the next board meeting? Do you want to do that?
Certainly, I, there is, yeah, because we thought, Diane was just saying, we thought we had removed that issue about the search when we were talking, but obviously went there, which is no big deal, I mean, I understand. That's all part of this process is to make sure we get it buttoned up, but we will. Yes, is the answer, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Chris? Okay, let's move on then. Meetings held. We had a Facility and Maintenance Committee meeting. John Cassio?
We had one of those meetings? Yes, we had a great meeting. It was held on April 1st. It's almost like a joke, but anyways, the committee met and we reviewed the different phases, what we're going through at this point. We also looked at all of our buildings in town, especially with the High Crest Portables and moving in that direction to, with the town going in that force. Interesting enough, Phase 2 of the plan uncovered quite a bit of information and Mike, you can certainly pitch in, because you met with the committee prior to us having that meeting.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Right now, with regard to Phase 2, Colliers and Malone Nick Room are working on scenarios. What they've looked at is the feasibility of being able to place new buildings on adjacent property. In several cases, it is feasible to place a building adjacent to the current building. At this point in time, they're still continuing their due diligence, so they're looking at wetlands, they're looking at other potential deed restrictions. And then Colliers is taking part in the cost analysis, so how much will this ultimately cost? My expectation is within the month, we should have some results that we can bring forward to the public and start talking about the future of our elementary schools.
Mike, when you say, when you say cost, are you telling me the cost for Phase 2?
No, we're talking about the cost of the entire project. So what would it cost to renovate? What would it cost to build new?
So we'll get two prices and that's just...
You will get multiple, and what will happen is there'll be multiple scenarios, so, you know, we're...
Price tag on each, okay.
Yeah, so we're going to have to figure out, you know, what works for the town, you know, what certainly doesn't break the bank, but what gets us the most bank and buck.
The other thing I think you have to understand is that it's interesting to see the information that we're receiving, what is a wetland and what isn't a wetland and the surprising information that we, what we can do with our current property. And so we've got a lot of different scenarios out there, so.
Okay, thank you, John. You can keep going because you're involved with the Memorial Day Parade Committee.
Well, the date hasn't changed, it's going to be Saturday, May 25. The theme again this year is going to be honoring Gold and Blue Star families. From our last meeting, which occurred on the 10th, the speaker this year at the cemetery is going to be Mark Granato.
I know him, yeah.
And Mark recently has a book and he's got a wealth of information regarding Gold Star families within Weatherfield. So we felt it would be a great opportunity for Mark to share his information as well as honor the families in Weatherfield at the same time. The grand marshals are going to be Gold Star and Blue Star family members. We've reached out to several Weatherfield residents. Many of them are humbled, have not committed yet, so we're still trying to get into that direction with them. The eighth grade essays have been completed and turned in and I got to tell you, this group of essays this year were phenomenal. Great writers, spirit, the enthusiasm and the depth of what they actually wrote on Memorial Day means to them and they were all different. So it was a real hard selection this year. So that will be announced, as well as the sixth grade posters will be completed after the show, the Annual Art Show. They were pretty busy working on that and they will be displayed in the hallway here in the town hall. So there's a lot of integrating of the schools and the town this year. It's going to be a great parade, so thank you.
And you ordered the weather?
We did, it's going to be beautiful. Not going to rain, but if it does, it's going to be at the high school.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for John? Okay, thank you, John. Okay, so WEC, which is our Weatherfield Early Childhood Collaborative, they met on April 15th. We meet in the library. The goal is that all Weatherfield children, birth to eight, are healthy, developmentally successful learners and connected to the community. There was an update on the Harper Foundation for Public Giving. We also talked about PEP, the 2019 class, the Family Learning Program, which we just were talking about with the grant. Also, there was a professional development for early care and education providers that has already happened. We are working on a two-gen initiative and we had consultant Paul Libby come in and he showed us the assessment tool that we're now going to work on and it will give us a, an idea of where we are and how we can move forward. And we also had the Family Place Library Program, which is an interesting program for young students, especially going through, I can, all I can think of is foundations of, long ago, where you go through stations and you look at and work on skills that young children would need to be successful in education. This is, it's just a wonderful group and I so enjoy meeting with them. All right, we have Student Program and Services Committee. John Morris?
Thank you. We had three very interesting presentations. The first one was from Teresa Strong, who's a manager with the Community Redoal Team, who gave us an overview of the RSVP Reads Program, which is a program which seniors 55 and older come in and read to our kids in the school. And apparently, it's very popular, very successful, the seniors like it, the kids like it, and it's something we'd love to be able to expand on. The second was on the UConn ECE Digital Foundations Program we just passed along a few minutes ago. One other interesting though about that is that UConn apparently has its sole or subscribed to break it out into four separate classes, so that's apparently the wave of the future for a lot of our kids. The third was a presentation on the initial stages of our Next Generation Science Standards, which our staff is working on. This was more just of an informational meeting and so we didn't get to that many details and the ones they dig into, I started fading on because I wasn't feeling the greatest by the end of it.
Great, thank you. Any questions for John? Those are always such good meetings.
They are.
We love them.
I love the reading thing.
They're good, they're great. Okay, so we'll move on to Crack Council. Ginger?
Well, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it to that meeting because I was traveling with my family, but I can tell you that they reported on their continuing departmental budgeting process and that they continue to monitor activity at the legislature, especially as concerns their, the one bill that they issued to try to get full funding for the magnet schools restored. And next month is their annual meeting, so hopefully there'll be a lot more information then.
Okay, great. Any questions for Ginger on Crack? You know, they have more unknowns than we do.
Oh, huge numbers of unknowns, yeah.
Amazing. And Finance and Information Committee, which we just left. Kevin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a reminder to everyone, the board, we have approved our budget, moved it over to the Town Council a few weeks ago. On Monday, we have a workshop between the board and the Town Council, it's now at 7:00 PM on Monday of next week. With that, the board approved, we have our operating budget as an increase of 2.97%. For this fiscal year, we are running at $77,000 roughly under budget with the same, similar as last couple of months in terms of unbudgeted expenditures, such as the Hammer Nurse and Discovery Academy Transportation and savings such as the teacher retirements, the ABA program, bringing more kids in-house and the special transportation routes no longer needed. We also had some brief discussion regarding the teachers' retirement, which is in our budget and what happens if that does not, is not contained into the state budget and doesn't get kicked down to us, as well as some possible scenarios regarding cuts, should they be needed in the future.
Any questions for Kevin? Okay, thank you. Kevin, thank you. All right, meeting schedule. We have a special Board of Ed meeting, our board retreat, always sounds so good, it's in the basement, on May 1st at 6 o'clock. Hope we can all be there. We have the Memorial Day Parade Committee again on 5/18 at 7:15. And WEC, Weatherfield Early Childhood Collaborative, will meet on 5/13 at 4:30. So is there any unfinished business from the board? Okay, anyone wishing to make a public comment? Come on... Anyone wishing to make a public comment, come on up to the podium. Please state your name and address, and may I remind you that we have a five-minute limit. Are there any board comments? John?
Thank you. Just a reminder, the Mayor's Charity Ball is going to be Friday, June seventh, at the Weathersfield Country Club. Once again, we're helping the town social and youth services for Action Hunger. Last year, this charity ball raised over thirty thousand dollars to help out with the town community. So, one other note, I just want to thank the Central Office and the Board of Ed. We have one hundred percent participation. All board members are attending, as well as the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. So, that is a great, thank you, from the committee and for myself. That's great. I wonder what the Town Council's gonna do. I wonder if they'll get a hundred percent.
I hope. It really is wonderful, that, and we're, you know, go to HAT and programs like that, and they utilize this money for children who really need it and families. Anybody with comments for John? Okay. Anybody else for a board comment? All right. Well, I always like to take this time to communicate to you the other organization that the board works with besides our own board committees. I did have the opportunity to talk to PEP. PEP is People Empowering People, and is a program set up by UConn to create a network of Weathersfield adults who will work to become leaders in our community. This dedicated group, which is the third, was very interested in and asked many questions about our schools and how they can help. Also, HAT, our Hunger Action Team that I just referred to, met, and this group continues to address our concerns that all townspeople have access to healthy foods. Also, ALICE, which is an acronym for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. Michael and I attended the United Way ALICE Challenge Meeting. The challenge is to engage community residents and stakeholders to identify the key barriers facing ALICE families in Weathersfield, and to develop a solution that will have a direct impact on the household budget of ALICE families in the areas of early childhood education, economic mobility, and access to healthy food. Thirty-four percent of our population is in the ALICE category, and I find this information most important for a Board of Ed to be aware of when making educational and budget decisions. The board is also very appreciative of our Friday updates. It gives us a glimpse, like we saw in the outdoor classroom today, of what our twenty-first century curriculum looks like in action. So, thank you, principals. I thought I'd give you an abridged version of our Friday update for all of you out there. Charles Wright did Give Me Dirt and Palm in My Pocket, love both of those. Emerson Williams had a math museum. Hamner had civic awareness project in helping animals. High Crest, Could You Love It? Rock Brain, which is a social and emotional curriculum activity. Webb, twelve students were recognized at the Yard Goats Game for Most Improved Students. Sosteen Middle School did virtual reality, using the virtual reality computers to study rock layers and fossils. Weathersfield High School Italian Class did a stop-motion video of Italian past tense words. And of course, Michael already mentioned it, the appellate court visit, thanks again to John Morris and to Matt Forrest. And, you know, there's so much more that's going on out there, and we do get a glimpse in our Friday updates, but thank you to all the administrators and staff who worked so hard to put that together. Any other board comments before we turn it over to Eden? Eden, comments about life at the high school?
Thank you very much. So, as we're now entering the fourth quarter, my final quarter, terrifying. There's a lot going on, students are getting ready to enroll their enrollment deposits, which is scary, because we have a week. There's a lot going on, so we have the Next Generation Science Standards testing this week. I'm jealous. I got to do it last year, I don't get to do it again this year. We unfortunately were notified of it last second, some students didn't know until they were walking into the classroom, which is kind of terrifying. We didn't see the schedule until morning of, which led to some frustration for staff and students, but we're working through it now. We also have a luncheon learn on April twenty fifth with Dr. Kalila Dan. She specializes in family medicine, and we all look forward to it. And lastly, we had a student council fundraiser, Battle of the Bunnies, Mr. Rio won by a sixty-dollar landslide. Very entertaining to watch someone conduct with a bunny suit on, I must say.
Great. Any questions for Eden? Life at the high school?
Oh, yeah.
Great. Okay. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to move to executive session for the purpose of discussion of employee contract negotiation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that concludes the public part of our board meeting. Thank you all for coming and for watching. The board wishes you a good night.